Good evening. We'll do the elementary school waterfall. There we go. Everybody always likes that one. Good evening. Today is Monday, April 20th, 2024, and the time is 7:00 PM. This meeting of the Prosper ISD Board of Trustees is hereby called to order according to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Representing the quorum this evening is Mr. Bridges, Mr. Dial, Mrs. Dixon, Mr. Cavender, Mr. Winker, Mr. Van Wolf, and myself, Bill Beavers. Mrs. Dixon, would you please pray for us this evening?
Yes, absolutely. Dear Heavenly Father, we just bring you a night of gratitude and thanks. We thank you for our teachers and staff and district and campus administration who have worked so hard this year, not only to master their profession, but all the work behind the scenes and the daily love and care that they've given their students. Lord, we pray for the families, for their behind-the-scenes work and all their devotion and collaboration to make sure that their children are successful. Lord, we thank you for a wonderful school year and all the people here who are here to celebrate these students and their accolades. Lord, we pray for safety and rest and restoration as we enter the summer, and we pray for safety as well for the next day and a half of school. Lord, as always, we pray for wisdom and discernment for the business before us as a board. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Mr. Cavender, you have the board vision for us this evening.
The board's vision is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors traditions, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels.
Thank you, sir. As always, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, which can be found in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. All of our voting must be in public, but we can privately discuss certain items, including but not limited to matters regarding individual employees, individual students, land acquisition and real estate, school safety and security, and matters requiring legal advice. However, after that private discussion, any final vote must be in complete view of the public. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the agenda for tonight's meeting was posted for the public to view at least 72 hours before the meeting. Here in front of you, you will have some upcoming dates. We have graduation this week that we are all extremely excited about. And then that will take us right into celebrations. And we have a number of young ladies standing over here that I think we're going to get to.
We have many tonight, and so you probably all saw this fabulous team. And actually, I'm going to have you all come and see it so everybody can see you. I know, yes! So everybody come up here because they need to get a good view of.
Don't be shy, right? Champion.
Okay, y'all keep going. There's a lot of. So this group in front of you is 6A State Champion. State Champion. And we are so very proud of them. These young ladies, watching them through the season, but I think also just watching their camaraderie, the way that they work together as a team, have mutual respect for one another. I love watching the coaches, Coach Dickinson and Coach Malden, and the way that they handle themselves on the field. And that is a key piece of it. There's a little bit of luck, I think, kind of involved as you go through this gauntlet of North Texas because soccer is legit in North Texas. It also is down in the Houston-Austin area, which is who they play against. But what was that? Houston? I can't even remember. Anyways. And so, very, very proud of each one of these young ladies and their coaches. They, Olivia, where are you? Okay, so Olivia was named the MVP for all of 6A UIL Soccer for Pearls. Watching Olivia, I know that wasn't an award just for Olivia. That was an award for this team. And they truly, the way that they bond together and play together is what allowed them to get that gold medal around their neck. And I would also say thank you to the parents, being able to listen to the coaching from the stands. I appreciate it. It was helpful. But it was more cheering, pride, support. But also, I think their respect that they had for both of these coaches. So many times in this area, the competition can never get a hold of you as a parent. And what I saw of this group of parents is true support for the coaches or the players, and that not one player was better than another, that we're all in this together. And it was a beautiful thing, which is how they got to that state champion level. Now, the girls that are seniors, raise your hands. Okay, so the seniors actually will be able to wear their gold medals at graduation when they graduate on Wednesday night. This is such a huge honor. It's just, it's above and beyond that we get to this level. The last time they had a state champion was 2017. A team. And so they will have a picture on the billboard that will actually, we'll take one down and then we'll put these young ladies up. So I want to say congratulations to you. We're very, very proud of you. And thank you for representing Prosper ISD at such a high level. I do want to give Coach Dickinson and Coach Malden a little bit of a shout out too, because you have the Coach of the Year right here in front of you. For the play, but also they are district. And then you have the Assistant Coach of the Year at the state level in the district. Girls, real fast, because I kind of have to say your names and we're going to do it as fast as you can. But you, like, you earned this moment. Molly, where do you start?
My name's Molly. And then it's Brooklyn. Seth, Chase, Cody, Addison, Kayla, Burke, Paula, Scott, Regan, Spreya, Reagan.
Working as a team.
Hey, Reagan, Cora, Olivia, Maddie, Ashton, Joseph, Ellie, Cam, Izzy.
Let's all give them a. You've done this before. All right, everybody, you want the kitchen?
It's awesome.
Congratulations. So just to give you a little bit of highlights to this team. Overall season record, 26 wins, two losses, two ties, scored 105 goals. Opponents only scored 23 goals on them. So their defense is incredible. And first time in PISD history for a soccer team to make it to the state tournament and win it. So very impressive. I don't think we have Skylin. I do want to make sure that I recognize her, though. So Skylin may be a name that was familiar to you from last year. She won the triple jump and the long jump at the state level. She turned around this year, going back as a senior, and once again clinched the gold medal in both of those events. So absolutely outstanding. Okay, so we have a naming of new facilities now. And so that's something that we do quite a bit. I think at this point in time, we have 12 facilities either under construction or under design. We are one of the fastest-growing districts in the state of Texas and definitely the fastest-growing district in North Texas, for sure. So the first facility that we have is the Mayhard Family Resource Center. You may be familiar with this facility. The board purchased that facility several years ago. That was a storefront from Mayhard Egg Farm, which is a big producer, a big business in this community for many, many years. And so the board wanted to make sure that we were honoring our legacy. Our vision is grounded by tradition and soaring the new beginnings. And so with that, the Mayhard Family Resource Center will be renamed. Because right now, we just kind of call it Mayhard, but it doesn't have actual letterings on it and things that really give it that level of prestige in the community. And we want that for the Mayhard family. Beginning in 1926, Prosper's Mayhard Egg Farm supplied eggs to numerous chain food stores, food service supply companies, and distribution warehouses across Texas and Oklahoma. Mayhard Family has long been a supporter of Prosper ISD. Jim Mayhard was the president of Board of Trustees for three years in the early 1950s. Ernest Mayhard was a trustee from 1959 to 1961. The Mayhard Egg Farm had a retail shop on First Street, which is this facility. And in 2021, Prosper ISD purchased the retail shop and repurposed the building to house our Family Resource Center and provide additional office space to serve our personnel. People continue to come to the building and buy eggs. I kid you not. Sell eggs here. We're like, no, we have some support to again help you with the major economy. Representing the Mayhard family, we might have Caitlin Mayhard and Emily Van Der Linde. A little impactful dedication will be brought to your family. I will tell you probably one of the neatest things about this facility. I was so excited when the district purchased it because I wanted to go over and see the inside. They had chicken wallpaper. There was fireplace. I was like, this place is amazing. Yes, your grandpa. So we are so excited to have this name officially on this building as it should have been from the start. And for the two of you to be able to be a part of this moment, but also your family to carry this legacy forward because we wouldn't be where we are in Prosper ISD had it not been for your family really supporting this community at so many different levels, whether on the lecture, serving on the school board, or being a student in the district. So we're one true. Next up, we have the naming of Elementary Number 20. So this is a name that I knew even from my past, but not knowing this person specifically. But this Smotherman family is a very known name, just like the Mayhard family is in Prosper, true pioneers of this community. And we learned some great history about Virgie Smith Smotherman. And so her name will go on Elementary Number 20, and so it will be Smotherman Elementary School. A little bit about Miss Smotherman. Virgie Smotherman was a lifelong resident of the Navo Prosper community. You don't know where Navo is. It's out west towards Bend. Born in 1908, she married age 10 in 1933. They had four children who attended Prosper schools, as did their grandchildren. She taught in Prosper schools for three decades. Beginning in the early 50s, she taught homemaking. For her many years as a first-grade teacher, letting a delicate mark on every Prosper student who came through the school, laying their educational foundation by teaching them to read and write. Her last year of teaching was in 1972 and 1973, making sure that she led first grade with her youngest grandson at the time. Virgie was a beloved teacher and an inspiration to others. Much of her teaching career, she dealt with debilitating conditions confirmed her or confined her to a wheelchair in her later years. Representing Miss Smotherman tonight is your granddaughter Kathy and her husband Andy. Your Smotherman's mom. This is a big deal. So thank you all so much. Virgie obviously set the foundation for a lot of expectations of what would happen with educators for many years to come. Her dedication and as I've heard stories about the way that she had taught all these kids to read in this little bitty small town that once was a little bitty small town, was impressive. But even more impressive was that end with legacy when she said, "I will wait to retire and leave this until my last grandson goes across." And so I just felt like that was such a special thing. And so we are very, very honored to have Smotherman Elementary in our school district. So thank you so much. There are more great things to come because we'll have a dedication and a big celebration once we get everything set up. But we'll kind of watch the building being built. It's over on the west side of the district, so. There's some people who like to come walk through the halls and talk about the past. We, the present teachers, go there. Well, congratulations to your family, and we're so proud to have Virgie's name on it. We have the much-awaited reveal of Richland High School mascot. And maybe I kind of slipped a little bit last month during the board meeting because a couple of board members were like, "Hey, I think I saw it." I was like, "Yeah, you did." But we took it down real fast. So I'd actually like to ask Dr. Luke Coy, who is the principal of Richland High School, to come up. And of course, he is dressed in purple. And please make sure you check out the shoes because. So the design features, the mascot is the Raider. The Ranger is often associated with the American frontier spirit, embodying the idea of forging new paths and overcoming challenges. This choice embodies the Raider ideas of honor, resourcefulness, and a sense of adventure. The Richland R, the Bevel Effect, adds depth and dimension to the potter. This choice embodies a sense of solidity, strength, and craftsmanship. The shield that is on the design is inspired by the Rock Hill Shield. The shape embodies unity, resilience, and tradition. And just for those of you in the audience, the board made a commitment many years ago that our high schools would be named after the original schools that started Prosper. There were about seven different schools that made up. And then in 1902, Prosper ISD became Prosper ISD and it became consolidated. Richland, Rock Hill, Walnut Grove, and there are a few others, one of them being White Elephant and Cotton Farms. The good thing is, we only have six high schools. We'll probably dodge those. Richland was one of the maids because of the rich soil that exists and its cotton farms throughout this entire community. So are y'all ready? Okay, we're about to drumroll, right? So the next question is going to be, what is the mascot called? And actually, the kids get to choose that. So Dr. Coy will get to work on what is the name of the mascot, just like Wally is at Walnut Grove. The kids chose Wally. And they'll get on that. So we'll just have to sit and wait, find out what the Richland Raider is going to name. Right now, Stafford's one. Oh, and a second to Stafford's two. As a tradition in Prosper ISD, really honoring those who serve and serve selflessly. I'd like to ask Mr. Jim Bridges if he would please come forward. So if you don't know Jim Bridges, you're missing out. He is something truly special, serving 13 and a half years on this school board, actually through some of the most tumultuous times I think we've ever had. And if you know, Dr. Yancy had an accident, and there was a, he woke up one morning. Mr. Bridges had become the school board president, and he was like, "Hey, I think you're going to have to step in to me." So that was kind of our first little chant. He did ask me if I ran on the road, and I said, "I'm sorry." So I did clear that up immediately to make sure I wasn't running on the road. And Jim Bridges has just faithfully and willingly served this community above and beyond any call of duty. And the fact that he came back in after leaving us to serve once again, just really exemplified his true servant heart for the students, the staff, the parents in this community because he just wants to give back. And he wants to make this a better place because he and his wife Sally are truly committed to Prosper, raising their own children here, but also choosing to stay in the community. Now, Mr. Bridges told me the other day when we met, he said, "You want me to bring back all the things that you honored me with the last time?" And I said, "No, I'm just going to give you more things." But I actually lied because what we're going to give them tonight is Jim Bridges Middle School. Well, I mean, I think, I've got to say a few words. Well, I will tell you, this has probably been the hardest secret on the planet for Sally Bridges to keep. We had to go through a lot of the details and all the things that needed to be done so that we could have this moment. Because as you can see, just another testament to your legacy and who you are, that you have all these friends and family who want to come and be a part of this moment. We are so very honored to have Jim Bridges Middle School in this school district and to be able to really honor you. So thank you so much for all that you've done for everyone. And I will say specifically to me, gosh, I couldn't thank you enough. Taking a brand-new superintendent and whipping him.
I just want to say, I just want to say one thing. I've done this before. I've not done this before. I've stepped away from the school board before. And I had some things I said there that I won't repeat. But I do want to make two points. And the first point, as I was thinking about my last meeting today, was the privilege that I've had for almost 14 years to be as close as anybody who's not an employee of Prosper ISD can be to our administration and our staff. Meeting after meeting, conversation after conversation for years, even though some of the faces have changed, the heartbeat of this district and its love and concern and care for children is remarkable. And then sometimes I've talked with Dr. Ferguson, when we've had a really rough patch, and I've said, "How, you know, how do you recharge? How do you recover from that?" Her answer has always been, "I go to school. I go hang out with kids." And to me, that's just the heart of our district. That's the heart of our administration and our staff. They get their charge, they get their joy from their time they spend with our kids, caring for our kids. There's a lot of other stuff they've got to do, but that's a real big part of it. And then the other high privilege that I've had is to work with the people that are behind y'all, our current school board trustees. What a high privilege to just work with them. It is a, it is an interesting job. It comes with a lot of sometimes positive recognition. But it's a, it's a job that these people are committed to donating their time and their energies to advance the district and to care for our kids as well. So I'm just really grateful for the group that's behind me. I'm especially grateful for all of these people that I love. And thank you for being here, each and every one who meets the world. I'm really, really honored. So thank you, and.
I'll look for Sally because she's got to make sure that Jim gets to the dedication. Jim has to get back twelve. We need you just for a little bit longer.
Congratulations.
That was fun, right? So we also have our state base awarded winners. This is our visual arts, the last event. I'm going to announce the space. And it's a UIL equivalent competition. In February, more than 33,000 artists from across the state with all the visions competed in this regional event. This year, Prosper ISD has invited 500 students to compete in a regional event resulting in 29 artists qualifying for state event in San Marcos. On April 27th, our 29 artists competed at state, earning Prosper ISD 23 state gold medals and one highly coveted gold seal. This year, state base awarded 162 gold seals. So we're thrilled to be able to bring one home to Prosper. I would like to ask our Prosper High School gold medalists to please come forward with their teachers. Will introduce yourselves. I want to say how proud I am of them because not only just that what they've achieved, but also visual arts is very different from performing arts. Performing arts, you get to go sit in an auditorium and you get to hear the voice of your players and see a performance on the stage. Visual arts does not get that level of prestige, but they certainly deserve it. And so this is one of the reasons we wanted to make sure you were involved in our school board meetings because it's such a high honor in what you've accomplished. You put in countless, countless hours to perfect each and every one of these pieces to get you to the level of state. And so I just wanted to say, on behalf of the Prosper ISD board and myself, congratulations and thank you for representing us so well. It's a sneak into the time of our school, yeah. We also have medalists from Rock Hill High School. So if you will please come forward with your teachers. So if you will each introduce yourselves.
My name's Nadia.
Oh, God, I'm a whisper.
Hi, I'm Scott.
I'm Ricky.
I'm, the other is Scott.
Very good. So we have a little bit of extra that came out of Rock Hill High School. And so we have Nadia with two gold medals, correct? Yes. And then we also have the gold seal. And I see that you have on your medal. Will you show that to us? And I see that you have on your medal, will you show that to us? I want to also tell you how very proud I am of you. And for the audience, if you've ever walked into any of our art studios, no matter what high school you're at, the amazing thing is just the level of attention to detail. But also what you will find is that these teachers are teaching multiple classes within one classroom, multiple levels of art. And really being able to give specific feedback to each of these artists to help them get to this level. So the amount that you're juggling as teachers and then also being able to get your students to rise up to this level is beyond impressive. So congratulations to each of you. But wait, there's more. We have another hostage. Walnut Grove High School. So if you're one of the artists from Walnut Grove and then their teachers, if you please come forward. Well, it's the end of the year. We've got senior sunset and some things going on across the district. Introduce yourselves.
I'm a church.
I'm a small. So Walnut Grove, the school shouldn't even be open right now. August 2024 is when it was supposed to open. And being able to see what they've done in such a small amount of time, especially just kind of under the pressure of, there's a bunch of supplies coming into the school. We've got to get this place set up. Where's the play? Where's the paint? Where's the, right? And then to be able to really rise students up to the level that they are. What grade are each of you? Okay, so you see the potential ahead. So they're already state level and they're ninth and 10 graders. And so that really is.
She's in the one.
It's fine. It's the end of the school year. We're gonna let it go. I don't even know.
I know, I wish she was a sophomore.
Okay, it's fine. Okay, so you're gonna be a junior next year then or senior? Okay. Congratulations to each of you on reaching such a high level and being able to accomplish so much with the fact that you've got a brand new school. And to the teachers, thank you, thank you for what you poured into these students, the countless hours that you've given to the visual arts to make sure that our students shine at the highest level. So congratulations. Thank you, congratulations. At this time of year, as we head into graduation, we want to also honor our boy scouts, which turn into Eagle Scouts during their senior year of school typically. And then our girl scouts who are awarded the gold award. They will actually get recognition also at graduation, but we want to recognize them also during our board meeting. So Eagle Scouts, the Eagle Scout is the highest achievement of rank attainable in the Scouts, Boy Scouts of America program. Since its conception in 1911, only 4% of scouts have earned this rank after a lengthy review process. So I should have Taylor Graham. Oh, I should be able to pick you out. You're dressed a lot. Alexander Stevenson. Brendan Donnelly. Logan Bills. Hope I say this one correctly. Jay House for Josh. Brayden. Michael Duffy. Even Travis. Okay, everybody? So this is a pretty involved process because they have a project that they do along with earning all of these badges. But then at the final, you all had to go through an interview, correct? Yeah, you're, yeah, that was fun. So it's good skills for the future and certainly I know it probably was a little nerve wracking, but you did an excellent job and now you're at this level. I will tell you that very few, obviously, in our district are awarded at this highest level because you really have to stick with Boy Scouts all the way through and really commit at a high level. So your dedication and perseverance, it will serve you well, well into your future. So congratulations to each of you. Congratulations again. We'll see you at graduation with no running. Our Girl Scout Award, the gold award created in 1916, is the highest achievement in the Girl Scouts of the USA. Earned by Senior Ambassador Girl Scouts, only 5.4% of eligible Girl Scouts successfully earned the gold award. Erica Farrenfeld. Mackenzie Oates. And Saiga Murch. Congratulations, ladies. Walnut Grove State Golf Team, bronze medal, please come forward. So again, incredible, because again, the school should not even be open. And these young men, along with their amazing coach, went state and brought back some hardware. So it's a pretty impressive thing that you all have accomplished and there has to be a lot of team camaraderie and a coach who's really making sure everybody's feeling good and getting where they need to and also getting all of the different critiques that they might need out on the course. So season highlights for this group, and they truly set the standard. Eight tournament wins, two second place finishes, two third place finishes, district champions, regional champions, and bronze medal at the state tournament. Our team members are Ryan Shelber, Austin Randall, LT Harris, Colin Allstrom, and Grant La. And of course, their incredible coach, Coach. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Awesome. Congrats, guys.
Owen here tonight. Yes, there you are, sir. So this was a pretty exciting moment. If you don't know Owen, Owen was here last month with his brother Ethan, who is the valedictorian. But Owen is a freshman at Rockville High School. So Owen decided that Ethan may have gotten like a big award, but you're gonna go bigger, right? And so Owen actually won the gold in the 100 meter dash in the wheelchair division and the gold 400 meter dash in the wheelchair division at the state level. The really cool thing too, and you don't even know this, but the executive director of all of U I L, he text Coach Little and said, make sure that you get this to Dr. Ferguson because this kid's incredible. So you got looks all the way up to the top of U I L. So congratulations on that. But wait, there's more. He's the athlete of the meet, the state meet. In the 100 meter, Owen came from behind to win the state at the last 10 meters. This is true. At the 400 meter, he led wire to wire in his strong performance. And in both events, Owen set new personal records. Okay, so he's a freshman. We'll see you back next year. Congratulations.
Congrats.
That's it? Just a few? I think Coach Morgan is here, though. It's fine. She's not here. Let's give a shout out, though, to Coach Morgan. He is the track coach over at Rockville High School. I think Morgan's come back a couple of times. He's been to this board room several times. So congratulations, Coach, on coming back there again. Thank you for all you do.
All right, at this point, we are going to hold a quick two-minute recess. We would love to have y'all stay and witness the business part of the meeting. But if you would like to go ahead and go home, I know students, some of y'all have studies. Well, it is the last week of school, but I'm going to think that y'all have studies. So this would be a good time to exit. Thank you all. Out, so that will take us into number six this evening, public comment on agenda items. We have two people coming to speak this evening. First of all, I want to say thank you to the individuals that have signed up to speak. Appreciate y'all coming forward here. Based on the number of individuals this evening, we have three minutes allotted for each of y'all. And when each speaker gets to the podium, please tell us your name and whether or not you live in Prosper ISD boundaries. The first person this evening is Ms. Lucky.
Christina Lucky. I do live in the Prosper, in Winsong Ranch. So I am in the Prosper ISD. My daughter is a fourth grader, Lilyabloom, at Winsong Ranch Elementary. And I would like to say that we've now, it'll be five years since we've lived in the Dallas area. We moved here from Chicago where we were in private school. But when we decided to come to Texas, I was relocated here for work. We specifically sought out this community, this district because of the excellence that you, that we just witnessed, right? And I really loved those celebrations. And we've had a fantastic experience since kindergarten at Winsong Ranch. That, as you know, Winsong is split between Winsong Ranch and Bryan Elementary. And as we look ahead to the middle school, we would like to have our daughter there with her friends, with the people in the neighborhood. I think when I wrote down just some of the words I heard Dr. Ferguson share, whether she was talking about the soccer kids who are fantastic, I heard words like collaboration, teamwork, working together, bonding together, playing together makes a difference, true support from parents and all in it together. Those are values that enabled that team to come together and win the state championship. And I think when we think of that school, being all as one in a middle school in our community, that's what we want. That's what we, that's what we want our kids to be able to thrive. You know, even Jim, you talked about staying in the community. And I agree, there's something about, you know, living, just living together and being aside with one another. Right now, it's just, it's separate. It works, it's fine. But there's such an opportunity to keep us all as one and one unified group within Winsong. So that's what we're asking for, is just that opportunity to be one unified group within that middle school. I think it's, it'll thrive, the kids will be happy, and I think the community will itself see success. So that's my, that's my feeling. And thank you for all that you've done. As I said, it's a really impressive school district and we just want to continue the excellent work.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Ms. Warren.
I do not have a comment. I'm actually just, just signed up here.
Well, welcome, Ben.
We're gonna check your attendance. We'll put a star by it. It's good.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Warren.
All right, that takes us to number seven, informational reports.
Okay, so first up, we have enrollment. And so we are at 29,158 students as of current. We do have some students who are traveling overseas who have left for the summertime already. So that's a little bit of a drop from what we had. We do encourage all parents to make sure that students stay in until the very last moment so that we can have that unity and camaraderie where kids are coming together and learning together. So, but you can see still an addition of 3,600 students year over year at this time. We're already starting to see projected numbers for next year, which they're hovering in already at 30,000, above 30,000 students. So we will see what the summer brings us. And then our bond projects. Do want to highlight a couple of things that are happening that we'll talk about a little bit later in the board, but we're gonna put a pin in that because there are a couple of things that are starting to happen with the 2023 bond money. And that way y'all can discuss that. Certainly appreciate Huckabee putting those videos together for us each month to highlight all the great construction that's going on in this school district. And at this time, we'll have Ms. Biggs come forward. I believe we're gonna have a combination of people from the CNI department, curriculum and instruction, to talk about our achievements and our goals that have been accomplished. So welcome, Ms. Biggs.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ferguson and trustees. I just want to take a quick moment to tell you how unusual the report you're about to hear is. Most districts have elementary curriculum departments and secondary curriculum departments that operate very independently of each other. And Prosper, we're extraordinary for many reasons. One of them is because these teams work very closely together and was very serious about a pre-K through 12th grade through line. So elementary supports secondary, secondary supports elementary, and we're stronger because of that. So I'm going to turn it over now to Wendy Young, who is our Director of Elementary CNI, and Ms. Stephanie Sykes, who is our Secondary Director.
Hello, Ms. Young. Hello, Ms. Sykes.
We brought our notes, so we're gonna stick to our time. So thank you, Dr. Ferguson and the board, for the opportunity to shine the light on the work of our respective departments that really are truly married in their efforts. And our CNI mission statement that we collectively share is up on the slides today. And I just want to call out two phrases that you can see in it, both a guaranteed and viable curriculum and then student-centered learning experiences. In our time this evening, Ms. Young and I have the privilege to not really talk about our work, although we do love working very closely together. But we want to shine the light on the curriculum coordinators and the instructional coaches that provide that direct support to our collaborative teams and our teachers. This is the PLC process in Prosper ISD. And I know in previous informational reports, you've heard a little bit about our work towards being a model PLC district. And Ms. Young and I have used this document in our work with the school leadership and innovation team and our building principals. But our elementary and secondary curriculum coordinators and coaches are also using this work, whether it's guiding professional learning and facilitating curriculum collaborations or when our coaches are providing that boots-on-the-ground support. So we really love being able to see that common through line between school leadership and the curriculum instruction department. Our teams, like I mentioned, are made up of two specific roles, curriculum coordinators and instructional coaches. And we're gonna take a quick moment just to kind of highlight what their mission and their respective roles are and the way that they've made some impacts this year. The first position is the curriculum coordinators. And that image really represents how multifaceted their, their work is and their roles with keeping all means all at the center. They make programming decisions, they're facilitating professional learning, they're working with teacher teams to talk through balanced assessment plans, and they're spending a majority of their time working around the aspect of curriculum development. With all means all at the center, they're pulling teachers from all across. development. With all means all at the center, they're pulling teachers from all across the district to make sure that we not only have collective expertise, but collective perspectives for all students in Prosper ISD to come together in what we call curriculum collaborations to really design a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And we're really pleased to call out two of their statistics, K-12, pre-K-12, really. We've had over 150 teacher curriculum design collaboration meetings this year to really work on those documents for our teachers and teams, plus an additional 25 instructional material sessions in preparation for science getting new standards for next year.
Okay, so just as Stephanie spoke about the coordinator role, I'm gonna talk to you guys about the instructional coach position. So our district is unique in that our instructional coaches believe, or our district believes, that everyone deserves a coach. So our coaches work with all educators, so that could be, you know, a first-year teacher, or that could be an experienced teacher, just one teacher of the year, but still wants to improve their practice. We believe that our instructional coaching model, which was started by Dr. Ferguson, has served our district well because we are able to truly work side by side with our teachers.
You're going the wrong way. You're going the wrong way.
It's okay.
Ms. Trotter, help me. Help me. There we go. Sorry, Wendy.
It's okay. We actually practiced that. I'm fine.
Yes, we did.
Just humor. It's fine.
It's fine. It's the end of the year.
It's fine. It's fine. But our instructional coaches work side by side with all educators to ensure that we are providing high levels of learning for all of our students. Our instructional coaches also work side by side with our curriculum coordinators to make sure that, again, we are providing everything that our campuses need to provide high levels of learning. Just as Stephanie spoke about those statistics for coordinators, you can see that our coaches have had over 2,000 individual targeted teacher support sessions and about 7,000 collaborative team meetings. Those numbers could never truly capture the work that is done behind the scenes among our team, but we believe that it begins to capture how much of an impact they play, and then we always put students on the end of that, making sure that the impact is felt for our students. Okay, now you can go the right way. Okay. All right. As we look into each content area, we're gonna start with English Language Arts and Literacy, just to kind of give you a glimpse into each content area. So together, both elementary and secondary ELAR coordinators conducted a book study and ongoing professional learning opportunities for our Writing Revolution Task Force. And so what this did was, the goal was just to increase teacher capacity, strengthen students' writing, and then align pre-K through 12 learning outcomes. We have found that explicitly teaching strategies for planning, revising, and editing will create opportunities for student success when writing across the school day throughout all content areas. So really, we just want to highlight some of the things that we've done in each content area, and that's one thing that we've done there. We also want to mention that our literacy coordinator works with both elementary and secondary staff members. At the secondary level, some of the work that has been done this year and that we're very proud of is the support that our secondary ELAR coordinator and literacy coordinator provided to the seventh-grade ELAR teams with onboarding a new assessment tool, looking at data, and responding to student needs. This sets us up nicely as we onboard a secondary literacy coach. We're also gonna onboard an elementary literacy coach as well. At the elementary level, we've continued to bring our task force groups together, which, our task force groups are comprised of teachers as well. Many of us in the room have been a part of one in our district. So we ensure that the alignment, that there's alignment and best practices, that we're research-based, and that it's reflected in instruction for all of our students. An additional layer of support that's been added this year is the work of our Literacy Learning Lab opportunities. Led by our ELAR coordinator, teachers learn more about an instructional practice, then they get to observe it in action, they plan how to use it, and then implement the new learning with job embedded feedback. So just that job embedded feedback has been huge for our campuses.
Good job.
Okay. Our science departments, we are so proud of the work of our science teams, the work that they have accomplished over the past two years with our new science standards. There's been so much work that has gone into this. Our science standards, as science standards, as many of you know, go into effect in August, but the work started two years ago. They've worked to provide learning opportunities for teachers around the professional learning targets that are mentioned on the slide. They've written curriculum based on the new standards and have gone through the process to choose new resources. We are so excited to see, we've always had great science instruction, but we're so excited to see that the shift in student engagement and critical thinking that have emerged from all of this work will truly be implemented and continued. So next, I'm gonna have the pleasure of talking to you a little bit about social studies. And, you know, Dr. Ferguson has five instructional observation points for us. We have student discourse, student engagement, and then high levels of questioning, and collective inquiry, and then we have the role of technology and feedback. And so what you're gonna hear on the next two content areas is how they've been really laser-focused on finding those specific instructional observation points to kind of create some high-leverage learning opportunities for their students. So social studies has been really laser-focused on historical thinking and how it intersects with those observation points. And historical thinking is a terminology in that pedagogy that refers to the skills that students need to think critically about the world around them. Some examples of historical thinking skills are students using primary sources from various points of view to get an understanding of historical events in the past to help them better understand the present. In the secondary world, they created a historical thinking task force that had representatives from all of our secondary campuses to really do some of this deep learning together and then plan with the instructional coaches and the coordinator about what that learning would look like for the entire department moving forward. One of the things that I love about this task force is it de-centers the work of our teams and it highlights the excellent teachers and their expertise to be able to deliver the professional learning to their peers. So we will start seeing them build that capacity and then also move that forward with the boots-on-the-ground of the instructional coach. And then our last content, no, second-to-last content area that we're gonna talk about today is world languages. And I love how you guys are very visible out doing learning walks, and so the next time that you're in a world language classroom, you might walk in and realize it's not really the world language classroom of your childhood or of mine. You're actually going to hear German, and, not German anymore, but French, Chinese, Spanish. You will see American Sign Language. You will see Latin being read. It is a dead language, but we still, we still teach it. And it just really warms my heart because our world language team has a goal of students being able to be bilingual and bilingual after four to five years of study. And that's not going to happen if we're not making sure that we're designing curriculum and designing learning experiences for teachers to use strategies that get kids reading and writing and listening and speaking and conversing in that target language. One of the ways that we've been able to make ground, or cover ground as quickly as we have in Prosper ISD is, again, back to that role of the instructional coach, but it's a unique fact about us. Our district is literally one of maybe a handful, I can really only name three others, that have a dedicated instructional coach for world languages to help our district reach our goals in bilingualism and bilinguality. So that is, that is very cool. We're very proud of that. Okay. If you were to walk the hallways of our campuses, you have probably already seen or will see students standing and discussing math concepts using a vertical workspace, or what we might know as just whiteboards. But what's happening, if you really kind of step in and listen, you'll notice that this is a strategy that we use in our classroom that has opened up opportunities for students to think critically, discuss, and defend math concepts that deepens their understanding. All of this has been research-based, if you've heard of building thinking, building thinking classrooms. The collaborative approach enhances their ability to transfer and apply their learning to solve mathematical problems effectively in various contexts. You will often hear our math coordinators say that they are growing and developing thinkers, not just human calculators. So we're really looking for transfer of all concepts in any content area that we talk about, but we're really wanting to see transfer and just deep thinkers when we're talking about math as well. So with high-quality instruction, throughout our learning over the past several years, our instructional coaches have been able to capture and collect high-leverage instructional strategies. This has been hard work that has proven to be highly effective for all of our students. We are proud to say that we have a repository of resources that teachers can refer to to aid in their design of tier-one instruction. Both elementary and secondary have strong partnerships with our advanced academic department and our ESL teams to ensure that our instructional strategy playbook meets the needs of all of our learners. So we just really want to thank you for your time and listening to us share about the people in our department and then the work that they do, but we also know that everything we do in Prosper ISD is because of the faces that you see on this screen. All the work that we do is because we want to make sure that every student in our district is receiving high, high levels of learning. So that means that we are going to do anything within our ability to make that happen and through the people that we are representing up here. So we really just thank you for your time that we could share these things.
Thank you all very much.
I see we have a couple of the instructional team here. If you'll please stand and be recognized, because giving your time tonight, too, to support your... There's more, but those were the two who were willing to give their time tonight. Very good. Dr. Bradley is on his way to talk about the Richland School Attendance Zone.
All right. Members of the board, as you know, several of you, we spent a decent amount of time together last week to look over this, and so tonight, I want to remind you, we're looking at an informational report, so this is not the adopted zone, this is a proposed zone. And I want to give a little explanation to these two maps that I'm gonna show you that resemble the same thing, one with numbers and one with colors, just to make it a little more clear. But as you know, the district is opening the fourth high school, Richland High School, the Raiders, as we learned earlier tonight in August of 2025. And so that will be our fourth high school. We believe that probably it build out, we're somewhere around six high schools, five to six high schools, and so this will be our fourth high school, building it, again, large, like our others, comprehensive, have CTE programs in them, but you know, the west side of our district is growing rapidly. And what I, what I want the community and the board to understand is that, as we looked at these zones, one of the things that we spent a lot of time talking about last week, and we, as an administrative team, have spent a lot of time looking at, is this is, the difficulty here is that we're going to open four schools in the same general area of the district at the same time. So in August of '25, we're gonna open Elementary 19, which is in Legacy Gardens. We're gonna open Elementary 20, which is in Mosaic. We're gonna open Mosley Middle School, which is on the north side of Winsong, and we're going to open Richland High School all at the same time. And then the next year, it is our intent to open Middle School 7, right next to Legacy Gardens. And so what we've done, even though tonight, we are just showing the Richland Zone, we have been working behind the scenes to make sure that the Richland Zone somewhat speaks to what is going on with the middle school zones and the elementary zones. Now, that is extremely difficult to do when you're growing 3,600 kids a year, because we don't get to pick where they all move. But, but we know, working with our demographers, kind of what the west side looks like. I would like to also mention that one of the truisms that we have found, as long as we have used our demographer group, is west of the tollway tends to overperform projections. It seems like every time we open a new school and think, hey, this is great. I remember the year we opened Winsong Elementary, we opened like 385 students, and year two, we had portables. And so the west side of the district has always grown rapidly. That has continued to this day, and so we're building with that zone in mind. But, but at the same time, right, we need to relieve Prosper High School. This coming year, so we're finishing obviously '24, but '24-'25, we expect Prosper High School to have over 3,700 students in it, which is large, right? It has once had 4,000 students before Rock Hill opened, so we've done that before, but 3,700 students is a lot of students in a high school. And so we know we need to provide some relief. At the same time, what we're proposing to you tonight is something that we have not been able to do previously. With opening Rock Hill High School and Walnut Grove High School, we had to open those 9 through 12, or 9 through 11, and give seniors the option. We believe at this point that it would be possible, and our recommendation tonight, as we look at this, is, would be that we could open Richland High School, 9th and 10th grade only. There's some advantages to that from a budgeting standpoint, from a staffing standpoint, frankly, from a construction standpoint, to open 650,000 square feet on one day is challenging at best. And so we think that this could, could help. It also can help your programs. There's some CTE programs that are gonna be unique to Richland High School, that it would be difficult for a senior to take advantage of. And so opening 910 gives us some advantages. And so that is why, when you look at this tonight and you see that these numbers, I want to remind you of the key that's in the bottom left there, that this is 25, 26, 26, 27, 27, 28, and 28, 29. Those, those numbers reflect, based on the color that is there. And so what we're looking at, right, based on the demographers' numbers, would be that we would open Richland High School with this zone on the west side of the district, which at the bottom there, kind of comes up the tollway, at First Street, it goes west and comes around what is Star Trail, and then gets back to Legacy all the way up as we get to Frontier or Parven, and goes back to the tollway. And so if you're familiar with that area, those, those roads make sense to you. If not, they may be a little foreign, but that is the, the general zone that we have laid out. And then opening it with 9th and 10th graders only, we believe in year one, it would have about 1,050 kids. And so this would give, as you see, some, some relief to Prosper High School. I just told you that we anticipate they would have 3,700, over 3,700 kids next year, that would bring them down to 3,195. Now, that'd be a little different because they would have smaller freshman and sophomore classes, still really large junior and senior classes, right? Because all the juniors and seniors would stay there. And then in year two, '26-'27, we anticipate that Richland High School would have 1,709 through 11th graders. And then in '27-'28, 2486, and this would be the first graduating class. So, right, in, in May of '28, we would be celebrating our first graduation with Richland High School. It sounds like a long way away right now, but, but we know that it's not. It would be coming quickly. And so one of the things that's, that is important about this map is that if you look, as we get towards '27, '28, '28, '29, again, we're doing our best to prognosticate, but that's a difficult thing. But you see, at that point, we're getting our high schools fairly balanced, and that's encouraging because, right, we've had this situation where Prosper High School was so large, the other schools open small, but I think you're starting to see a balance throughout the district. And so this zone that we're proposing to you tonight is based on what we think we're going to have to do with the middle schools. Those, those are gonna come out later this year, right? We're still having to do some, dial in some work on, on Elementary 19 and 20, Middle School 6, Middle School 7, but this is a pretty good reflection of what we think would happen in those situations. So, as we've, we've heard about tonight, do our best, as best we can, in a rapidly growing district to keep kids together. It's, it's impossible in every situation, but to the extent we control it, we want to do that. And so this map, it just takes the numbers off and kind of uses the colors of the, of the mascots and the school to reflect where we're at. And so this information is going to be released tonight, right? I mean, obviously, it's probably already on social media, all right? Somebody may already have a comment. But we are going to release this information. We want to gather feedback from the community. Wednesday, June 5th, we're gonna have a time at Prosper High School cafeteria, where we'll present some of the same material and have some board members present and hear from the community. And so we want feedback so that we can, even though I feel like I've looked at these maps ad nauseam, it's always, you never know every story. And so we want to hear from the community on this. But those are the proposed zones tonight. So that's the report, but any questions or comments about that, be happy to entertain.
I just want to thank you for the incredible work that you've done on this, Dr. Bradley, and you continue to show up in the biggest way possible to try to be as fair and as equal as you can to all of our different parents and student groups and staff. One thing that I think is probably key in this 910 open is that we are off-cycle for UIL once again, and if you experience Walnut Grove off-cycle, that school traveled about 2,700 miles during the football season, and then kids were out of school on Friday, so missing instructional time. So the 910 would allow us to keep those kiddos in school and not traveling on the road as much as what we saw with Walnut Grove. So that's a bonus, for sure.
Yes, I'll second. Thank you for all the hard work and laying out from elementary, middle, and high school. I know that there's no perfect patterns right now, but all the work you're putting in and trying to alleviate as many moves as possible for the kids and families, we really appreciate it.
Thanks. Dr. Bradley, we still haven't heard your normal line of, "This is the least favorite thing that you do."
This is the least favorite thing that we do, right? It is never fun. It always, I mean, somebody's gotta move, and that, that's not fun, but, but at But, but at least you get to go to a new building.
That's right, a new building. And, but as stated here, we will have upcoming time to hear back from the community on this, which that has proven to be very, very valuable in the past. Again, thank you to the board members for making yourselves available to go in and have those conversations with people. So that will be coming up again Wednesday, June 5th at PHS Cafeteria.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bradley.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Questions this evening, or if not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Any discussion to be had? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? That is all seven of us. That takes us to action items. Nine A, consideration and possible action regarding changes to board policy. Policy Committee has continued to meet throughout the year. Thank you, Mr. Crownover and Ms. Matthews for that. And with that, is there a motion on this?
Yeah, I move that the board approve the changes to board policy as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Any discussion?
I just have a comment. Most of the changes within this board policy are very minor. Where our board policy mentioned superintendent, now it says superintendent or designee. There are some small banking changes. We put a line in about jury duty for staff. And then what you read on public comment on decorum, we just put that in our, our board operations. So there's not major changes. I just wanted to point that out.
And just to clarify too, on the superintendent or designee, it's in the exhibits of the policy, but we wanted to be more explicit with explaining to the community. So when they read an individual policy, rather than having to track back to the exhibit piece of that, they would already have that cleaned up in the policy. So thanks for pointing that out.
I would add, as part of the subcommittee, this is really just kind of cleaning up our board policy based on how we're actually conducting ourselves, how we're doing business. And so it's a big part of these updates is just really updating to the way we're functioning as a board and for the district.
Absolutely. All right. Anything else? All right. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor? That is all seven of us. That brings us to nine B, consideration and possible action regarding the sale of land to Tech Dot. Dr. Bradley.
Okay, members of the board, this is a Tech Dot widening project of 1385. So this is land that we own for Christie Elementary that just opened this year, that fronts 1385. It's a small piece of land, it's .239 acres. Tech Dot is offering to buy this land for $169,043. It won't impact anything that we have going on. It's really just moving the right of way back so that eventually they can expand 1385. Unfortunately, I don't think that's going to happen just yet, but they're preparing for that. So we have, asking for approval to sell this to Tech Dot. And as I've liked to mention with Tech Dot, if we choose not to, then we will get the opportunity to sell it to Tech Dot anyway.
It's up to you. Very nice. Thank you, Dr. Bradley. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the sale of .239 acres to Tech Dot as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Any discussion to be had? Anything with, with Tech Dot that, any action is progress? So I guess we will take that.
Take it.
Okay. Hearing nothing else, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor? That is all seven of us. That passes. Will take us to nine C, consideration and possible action regarding awarding the contract for paving at Reynolds Middle School and Prosper High School.
Two weeks ago, we entertained a contract, competitive sealed proposal for some concrete work that will improve the situation at Reynolds Middle School and Prosper High School. The situation at Prosper High School is on the west side. We used to have Talon Drive. That went away when Frontier connected with a bridge over it. But we want to go back now and connect, make a connection to Talon Drive coming out of the parking lot close to the auditorium with 3,700 kids there. And now that Coleman Road is complete in front of the high school, I think it makes sense to make a connection on the west side that will allow traffic to flow much easier on that. The town was excited about that as well. And so that's one piece of this project. The next piece of this project is improving some, those of you that are familiar with Eagle Stadium at Reynolds, on the south side of that stadium, we have an old white metal building. There's a lot of erosion situation there and old asphalt, and we need to really clean that up because we're going to have to move the business office portable there during this time. And so we need to pour some concrete there and clean that up. And then finally, a connection for our buses. Currently, they have to come out from the bus barn, go down, and then either leave on Church Street and go through the neighborhood, or they have to matriculate around Reynolds Middle School to get to Coleman. And this would provide a, a drive, as you know, we're building the maintenance building on the old baseball field at, at Reynolds. And this would provide a drive all the way through to connect just before Coleman Lane. And so it would prevent our buses from having to, you know, move around the middle school, which is going to be a little difficult next year as Reynolds will be under construction. And also, over the years, probably the, the number one complaint I've heard about transportation is buses going through the neighborhood. And we get it, but we have a lot more buses than we used to. That's not going to change. And so giving them a, an easier and more direct path to Coleman, I think will benefit the neighborhood and the district. So we entertained a competitive sealed proposal for that work. We, we received three bids, the, the low bid, and the, and the qualified bid was from Crossland Construction. And so that concrete work came in at $1,699,996.
Thank you, Dr. Bradley. Any questions for Dr. Bradley real quick as he's up here? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve Crossland Construction as a contractor for paving at Reynolds Middle School and Prosper High School as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Let's see here, this part was also, this was, this was promised on when we...
Some of our work with the bond.
Yes.
That we discussed those upgrades.
With the 2023 bond, yes.
Things that we would be doing to PHS and to Reynolds Middle School. So you all are delivering on some of those promises.
That's correct. And just here recently, I know that you see that work at both Reynolds and Rogers right now, and this is just one more piece that people will see work from the bond that, that they passed here this past November. So thank you all for, for keeping things moving to you and your team, Dr. Bradley. Anything else? Okay. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? That is all seven of us. Takes us to nine D, consideration and possible action regarding an MOU with the town of Prosper related to Legacy Drive.
Okay, I'm going to talk about motions D and E together because they're related. And then I, I know that you need to take separate motions, but to explain what's going on, middle school seven is going just off of Legacy Drive, just northwest of Legacy Gardens neighborhood. If you're familiar with the road between, Legacy Drive between Prosper Trail and Parven, I'm sorry, right? It's, it's not a place you want to be. And so in order for us to build a middle school there and open it in '27, we, we need a vastly improved road. And, and so that is going to have to happen in order for the middle school to be able to hold the traffic that it's going to require. Part of the issue with that is just north of Prosper Trail, there is a substantial creek flowing through there that's going to require a bridge. And so we have been in talks with the town of Prosper for the last year to figure out what exactly the, the answer is there. Four lanes in front of the middle school, two lanes south of that, two lanes north of it. All of it needs to be improved. What money is available? What, what can we do to, to make this happen? And so over the course of the conversations, we came with a solution that is a little bit different than the one we had at Rushing Middle School. Those of you that were on the board then remember that we had a similar situation with First Street, it was Fishtrap at the time, in front of Rushing Middle School, where the town didn't have the funds to, to build the road yet, but we needed it. The same thing is going on here. The town doesn't have the funding at this point to, to build the road, but we desperately need it. And so what we have designed in this situation, or what's before you tonight, is, is a, an MOU with the town, and in our local agreement, that says that we would essentially front the cost of this road. And, and ultimately, we're responsible for the two lanes in front of the middle school. But that, the two lanes south of it, where the bridge is involved, and the two lanes that the town would be forced to build, that we would pay for that upfront, and that within two years of completion of that construction, that the town would refund the district for the expenses incurred with that. The, the one way this is a little bit different than First Street is that this was not designed yet, and the town did not have the ability to enter into design at this point because they had no money for this. So E, nine E if you will, is a contract with TNP to design this. And so what we're asking for with E is, is awarding the design contract with Teignall and Perkins for $1.2 million to design this road and then help us construct it. And so what we're asking to do is to award the design to Teignall and Perkins. They design the road, they bid the road, and then the town is going to take over the project. We are going to provide funding for that project. When it, when it begins, we'll, we'll deposit 50% of the money. When it's 50% complete, we'll deposit the rest of the money. We will complete the project. On the day we sign off as that project is complete, the town has two years to reimburse the district for all of the costs associated with the design, construction, and completion of the road. And just to make it a little more fun, a needed water line that's going up, because right now, there's not a water line to serve this middle school. And so this involves, this is a pretty complex deal. That's why the, the MOU is kind of long and kind of wordy. But essentially, what, what we're asking for agreement for tonight is the ability to move forward with this, because frankly, without it, the middle school is going to be extremely difficult to access. And I don't think that would be good for anyone. Would be better for the town, it would be better for us. And so we're, we're asking for the opportunity to, to enter into this MOU, and then also to get the design complete so that, because this needs to bid really quickly.
We're going to take this in parts then, nine D first and then nine E. Thank you, Dr. Bradley, for explaining both of those. Does someone have a motion on nine D?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I move that the board enter into an MOU with the town of Prosper related to Legacy Drive as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Discussion on this?
Yeah, Dr. Bradley, so we're still in good shape timing wise to get this done prior to middle school seven opening, or are we right on that cusp? We need to get going.
We're, we're, we're within the timeline that we need. The, the bigger concern for us is the, the water line. And so that's why the water line is kind of called out separately in the MOU, because we need the water there to go vertical, right? Because the fire department's not going to let us go vertical on the construction without that. And so that is our, our biggest conflict, you know? We need to get that settled. And so getting this done tonight gives us plenty of time to do that. But I would imagine that we would, I, I think we're on track to, to build, bid this middle school in August, but I'm, we're going to bid this prior to that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, I will go ahead and call for a vote on nine D. All in favor? That is all seven of us, which will then take us to nine E, which has just been discussed and explained. We'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board award TNP the design contract for Legacy Drive as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Any other discussion? Same thing applies, I assume that we just heard on that. So anybody else? Okay. All in favor? That is all seven of us. All right. That now brings us to item 10, public comment on non-agenda related items. We have one person signed up to speak this evening. Thank you for your willingness to sign up. You will be allotted three minutes to speak, as the previous speakers did. When each speaker gets to the podium, could you please tell us your name and whether you live in Prosper ISD boundaries? Our speaker this evening is Ms. Lindstrom.
Hello, my name is Debbie Lindstrom, and I am here representing citizens defending freedom in Collin County, and I am a resident within Prosper ISD. I'm here tonight to address the potential effects of the recent changes to Title IX that were unilaterally and unconstitutionally enacted by the Biden administration, to inform this board and the parents of Prosper ISD of the latest developments regarding these changes, both in Texas and in other parts of the country, and finally, to ask for unanimous, unanimous action by this board that will protect the young girls entrusted to your care while in school. So what will happen if Prosper ISD enacts these new rules? First, it will force you to admit biological males identifying as females to girls' sporting events or face boundless civil rights lawsuits. Force you to replace students' biological sex with his or her gender identity when deciding which pronouns to call them, which bathroom he or she uses, or which athletic team he or she participates in. It will erode student privacy by permitting biological males to undress in otherwise sex separated intimate facilities reserved for biological females. Systemically disadvantaged female students in schools now forced to compete against biological males identifying as women in sports competitions. Obviously, the effects of these changes will be devastating for our young girls and will completely negate the original intent of Title IX, which was to protect them and allow them opportunities that they didn't have before. The unlawful action by the department denies women and girls in your school district the legal protections the United States Congress intended to give them. Fortunately, Governor Abbott and Attorney General Ken Paxton agree. The question is, do each of you? On April 29th, Governor Abbott instructed the TEA not to comply with the Title IX changes set to take effect on August 1st of this year. Also, on April 29th, Attorney General Ken Paxton filed a lawsuit against the department alleging violations of the Administrative Procedure Act for circumventing congressional approval and disregarding the original statutory intention of Title IX that accords with a meaning of sex that was widely understood and accepted to be binary and biological at the time Title IX was originally enacted. It's worth noting that Texas is just one of 22 states that have filed lawsuits. In Louisiana, at least 17 school districts have joined the state-led lawsuit against the Department of Education. So we urge Prosper ISD to follow suit and take a strong stance for the state of Texas and the community you serve by passing a resolution of disapproval for the unconstitutional modification to Title IX, and by joining the Texas lawsuit to protect women and girls as intended by Congress when they pass Title IX. For your convenience, CDF will provide a model resolution recommended for adoption and a follow-up email tomorrow. Thank you in advance for your careful and thoughtful attention to this matter.
All right. That takes us to number 11, report from the superintendent.
Yes, so Special Olympics, we had a great day. Tons of athletes that came from all over this area, and really being able to see our kids compete at a high level and just the joy, the sheer joy at this event. And I appreciate several of you who came out to be a part of this, to really see our kids, but also to honor our students who are helping to support students with special needs also. Just a great event, one that we all look forward to each and every year, and really bringing our community together. And then the PEF Awards night, the Prosper Education Foundation did an excellent job of really hosting a Class Act opportunity for our seniors. We had the chance to be able to connect and network with our scholarship recipients, but then also to be able to truly put them on stage and highlight the great things that they've done. Each of our kids, of course, showed up in the best way possible, and tons of money was given away for those students to be able to take their next step. So always a great night to celebrate and appreciate everything that the Prosper Education Foundation does to support our kids and staff. And then as of today, and last Friday, giving out kindergarten through 12th grade cords. This is a coveted cord in Prosper ISD because it's a high commitment by our parents to say, I will start my kids in kindergarten, and then we will do everything in our power to stay in Prosper ISD. I've had parents before who are like, well, I'll travel, I'll fly all week long so we can keep our kids in Prosper ISD. And so I will say that this is the cord that I get the most emails about. If it is lost or misplaced, like where will we get another one of these? It's 13 years, some of our students 14 years, and a mom told me today, I'm not going to go into the details, but she said this is a 15-year cord for my kid. And I'm like, well, thanks for staying around. And I'm like, well, thanks for staying around. We also honored our kids, too, for the superintendent advisory. If they've served in that leadership capacity, any time through ninth through 12th grade, serving on that advisory committee, they also receive a cord. So we will have the green and white cords for our K-12 students, and then also the purple and white for superintendent advisory, along with many other cords that our students will wear, along with some state medals for PHS. So we're excited about that and love honoring those true traditions of Prosper ISD. And I think that's all I have.
Okay. That takes us to number 12. All right, I see a couple of students out here that are looking rather tired. And all right, guys, we've now got y'all covered with this one. Let's see here. Board of Trustees election results. At a special meeting on Friday, May 10th, 2024, the board canvassed and certified the duly-called May 4th, 2024 election, which resulted in myself, Bill Veevers, being elected to the third term in place four, and Mr. David Webb being elected to his first term in place seven. Congratulations, sir. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank everyone who participated in the election process, made their voices known at the polls. We will now swear in the candidates. I'd also like to say thank you to Ms. Myers that sits out there this evening. Thank you for your running and how you conducted yourself in there. Also to Mr. Rogers. I will be sworn in first, and then Mr. Webb.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas...
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas...
I, Bill Veevers, do solemnly swear...
I, Bill Veevers, do solemnly swear...
...that I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
...of the Office of Prosper ISD School Board Trustee...
Of the place of Prosper ISD School Board Trustee...
...of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas...
...and will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability...
...preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution...
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution...
...and laws of the United States...
And laws of the United States...
...and of this state...
And of this state...
So help me God.
So help me God.
We'd like to ask Mr. Veevers, because this is a family affair. If you've ever served on a school board, it takes everybody in the family to be a part of this, extended and immediate family. So I'd like to have the Veevers family come up. And Katie, thanks for staying away.
Yeah, she did great.
Yes, sir.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas...
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas...
I, David Webb, solemnly swear...
I, David Webb, solemnly swear...
...that I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
...of the Office of Prosper Independent School District School Board Trustee...
Of the Office of Prosper Independent School District School Board Trustee...
...of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas...
...and will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability...
...preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution...
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution...
...and laws of the United States...
And laws of the United States...
...and of this state...
And of this state...
So help me God.
So help me God.
It's all clean.
It was real.
Ben and Zach, thank you for staying away.
It's weird.
Mr. Bridges, thank you again for your many years of service to the district. That now takes us to closed session. We will now enter into closed session according to Texas Comfortment Code, Chapter 551, Section 071, 072, 074, and 076. Thank you all so much for joining us this evening. That brings us to item 13, that was discussed in closed session. Is there a motion? Or I should say, consideration and possible action regarding board reorganization and election of officers? May I have a motion?
Right.
Yes, sir.
I move that the board approve the following slate of officers. President, Bill Veevers; Vice President, Deana Dixon; Secretary, Jordan Dial.
Thank you, Mr. Webb, and welcome to the board.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Any discussion to be had? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor? That is all seven of us. That takes us to item 13B, consideration and possible action regarding hiring of contract personnel. May I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the hiring of contract personnel as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor? That is all seven of us. That takes us to the meeting adjournment. The time is now 10:22 PM. Good night, and we will see you this summer.